... Let's get started. Please join me in the following. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we have our meeting attendants, visitors. We have a lot of visitors, so let's just go ahead and dive right into this. It is awesome to look at and see this many folks here. So thank you all for being here this evening. I'd like to start out, we have a number of new teachers within our school district, and at this time I would ask that each of you, please just introduce yourselves to everybody, and you can start in whatever order you'd like, whoever wants to talk last minute.
Hello, I am Tessa Ryder. I teach at the New Mill School here in grade eight. I was at University, so I'm looking forward to being this weekend.
I'm Jessie Norin. I teach second grade at Tilford. I just graduated from U and I in May, and I graduated from Vinton-Shellsburg in 2015.
I'm Michelle Holland. I teach fourth grade at Shellsburg, and I also graduated from U and I in December, and I'm from Washington, Iowa.
I'm Katie Bush. I teach third grade at Tilford. I attended U and I, and I graduated from Edgewood-Colesburg.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Norris. I teach kindergarten at Tilford. I went to Northwest Missouri State University, and I'm from Dexter, Iowa.
Hi, I'm Melissa Heron. I'm a teacher at the Fayetteville High School. I was here a year or so ago, four years, so I came back.
Welcome back. Give it up for Buddy.
I'm Maureen Alberton. I teach family and consumer science at the high school. I graduated from school out in California, and my kids are in Cedar Rapids, so I'm very happy to be in the area.
Taylor Alberton, high school business. Graduated from here in '08. Graduated from Mercy, and actually Kathy was one of my supervisors when I student taught, so.
Thank you all so much for being here, and thank you for being a part of our district, and also. All right, now we have a few awards to present real quick. The Class Act Awards. Can you like this?
Sure. And I invite the teachers, I invite you to stay just a little bit longer, and then there'll be a place where you can exit gracefully. Or you may exit gracefully right now.
There will be a mass exodus.
So our first set of Class Act Awards are going to be given by Ryan Davis for several people.
I have four people here tonight with me. First is Sharon Hartman. And Sharon came to me last year. Had a thought about before school starts, the crosswalk by our school. A lot of traffic was going through there, and we have staff at the crosswalk after school, but we didn't before school. We had kids that were walking before people were on their contract, and Sharon had the idea and came and asked if she could do crosswalk for us. And I think just about every day you are out there, rain, shine, polar vortex, swimming.
Lots of lawyers.
And she really helped us out in the morning, and can't say enough how much the staff and myself and our students appreciate it. Just your efforts to keep them safe. Thank you. Next, I have Ethel Knudsen. Ethel is a parent of one of our staff members and a grandparent of one of our students who is here tonight. And Ethel came and just asked, how can I help? How can I help the school? And you've been in our school weekly for sure, in some cases daily, helping out with all of our students, and has become one of our school grandmas, I would say. Teachers love her, staff love her, I love her, and so thank you for everything.
Thank you so much.
And finally, we have Ray and Barb Bookmeyer, who are also parents of one of our staff members and grandparents of students that have come through. And like Ethel, they ask, how can we help? And they've come quite a bit and volunteered, whether it be reading to students in some cases. If we had students that needed a mentor, I know Ray has mentored some of the young boys and helped out in that way. There's some beautiful bulletin boards if you can come and take a look at some of Barb's work. And they've also just been great volunteers, helping out in classrooms. Anita Yesek is their daughter, and so they've helped out a lot in her classrooms, but also in other ways as well. And so definitely appreciate everything that you've done for our students and staff.
Thank you so much.
So there, I don't think Nathan is here this evening.
Oh, Nathan, hot out.
So Nathan is a bus driver, but he's so much more. And so he was nominated by a fellow bus driver, Pam Lehman, and what she said, I know it's a very busy time, but wanted to share that while Roger was gone, Nathan stepped up and really helped out with the daily maintenance on the buses. And it just really, she wanted you recognized because you didn't have to do that, so. And then we have some young women who are here with Katie, Divina, Alyssa, Morgan, and Jillian. Please come up. We've got some of them here. So five junior girls who are now seniors were nominated by Crystal Coder, who served as the prom advisor last spring. And she said she wanted to nominate these five girls that worked really hard on prom last year. They had early morning meetings every month for eight months and worked about four hours per day after school during the week of prom, on top of all the homework and all their extracurricular activities. Prom was a wonderful success because of these five students that went above and beyond.
And then we have one last item here under public events here, public comments. The FFA chapter is here to share some information with us some information about their upcoming year.
So hello, we are the 2019-2020 Vinton-Shellsburg Office Routine. I am Frankie Evans, and I'm the president.
I'm Emma Wiley, and I'm the vice president.
I'm Ethan O'Leary, I'm the secretary.
I'm Phil Cohen, and I'm the treasurer.
I'm Isabel Mullins, and I am the co-reporter.
I'm Mary Rödinger, I'm the other co-reporter.
I'm Bailey Lee, and I'm the secretary.
I'm Ashley Towne, I'm the secretary-at-large.
Okay, so on the first page, it has our theme, 90 Years of Dreaming, Believing, and Achieving. So we thought that our theme encompassed what we wanted to be known for as a chapter. We wanted to set goals, believe in them, and achieve in. So, and if you turn to the pink tab, you will see our goals. So one of our goals is to increase enrollment in AGED slash FFA by holding four crew activities this school year. So we bounced around some ideas, and some of them were holding a tailgate for our football game against Sperrit, having a school lock-in for the FFA chapter, holding a dodgeball tournament, and during FFA week, bring contacts on every lock-in.
Another one of our goals is to promote a positive image of agriculture in FFA in the school and community by A, having at least two articles published monthly, which have been doing great so far. B, maintain, maintain chapter FFA Twitter and Instagram for news. We are also working on a Snapchat account. And C, maintain the chapter website, which we will get to Friday very soon.
Another one of our goals is to increase holiday sales to 38,000, and I've, we know that we are going to be able to meet this goal because we have 61 new members, and so we're very confident, confident that we'll be able to reach this goal.
Another one of our goals is to increase number of participation in the labor auction by 10%, which is four members. And we value serving the community, so we think it's a good idea to always give that to them, to thank them for support.
Another one of our goals that we feel is very important is to organize and conduct those three chapter bonding events held throughout the year. So we felt this was a good goal because we want all members to feel involved and have a place in our chapter, and we also wanted to start towards a mentorship type thing where we, as the older members of our chapter, are helping out the young ones, trying to find them a place in the chapters, they can find a familiar like you within the chapter, and things like that. So some examples of some things we might be doing is, like Ashley said, the tailgate, the lock-in, the dodgeball tournament, and some other FFA week activities we'll be doing on FFA week. And some rec activities after every FFA week, just a fun activity to get everyone like pumped up FFA and doing some fun stuff. So now we'll be talking about our calendar, which is under the orange tab, so if you can all go to that tab.
So the first big upcoming event that we have going on is in October, we're going to be, we're requesting to travel to Indianapolis for the National FFA Conference. We will, if we were to go to nationals, we will be receiving a two-star ranking, which means that we are in the top 3% of all 11,000 chapters in the nation. Eric Hingle will be receiving a diversified crop proficiency award in silver. And we will have 44 American degrees. That would make 33 total in the last 90 years.
Sometime in December, we would like to hold a major retreat, so we'd like to request to have that happen. We would like to do this because we want to get together, go over our goals and the progress that we've made so far this year, and we'd like to set new goals or switch things up if we need to.
In April, we will attend, or we are requesting to attend the Iowa State FFA convention. You mentioned Ames, it is a two-and-a-half day trip, and you should go see the national officer at this convention. We will hear a lot of motivational speakers, so wherever we learn from at the convention, we'll always bring back to help our chapter stay great. Are there any questions?
Like, how do you do the membership this year?
We have 61 freshmen, so that's really a big push into like how many members we have as a whole, but.
Right now, we have 272 full.
Yeah, I just, I just like to contact all of you guys coming here because I was not very comfortable with that today. You guys have so many opportunities, and there's so much stuff that you guys can use. I told you that you can keep these young people, you know, older people, friends, and younger people out there doing contests and stuff. That's stuff that they're going to learn, and they want to run the line, so I just want to make sure that they're ready to do it.
Might you come back to me later, your person?
Thank you all for being here tonight, and appreciate the, how you did the information you provided. I will have to say, my fruit POC ran away about four or five years ago, and honestly, I haven't been called in over four years, so someone here want to be my fruit POC? I'm waiting for a call. And real quick, they're going to head out. Well, with that, let's slide on to administrator reports. Who would like to go first?
You can start. We are getting underway with our fast testing this week, so we'll be collecting that data around literacy first, and then we'll be doing math following that. Tomorrow night volleyball kicks off, cross-country, and Thursday night we have volleyball and football, so it'll be fast-paced, six weeks of a bunch of games. Also, we have started our before and after-school homework club that started the first full week of school, so 7:30 in the morning till 8 o'clock, we have someone on duty Monday through Friday that any kid that comes in that doesn't quite get their homework done or needs some support with it can come in. And then from 3:19 to 4 o'clock in the afternoon, Monday through Thursday, we have two teachers on duty or two staff member on duty for that, so it's helped quite a bit.
Thank you very much.
I can go next. We're also starting getting into our fast testing. I'll be starting here fairly quickly. Kids are getting into routines. It's kind of nice to get that part of the year where we are in routines. Still dealing with some staffing things. I'm sure you see the board report. Some of that going on, plus some hiring. We've had some new students come in with IUPs that demand a little more staffing, so we're working on that right now. Otherwise, things are going pretty smoothly, so good start to the year. Tomorrow, we have our AEA math consultant coming in. We've been doing some things at the elementary level with math talks. We had some PD on that, and so tomorrow we'll be doing some things with our math consultant on that as is Tilford, but yeah, we're really moving along.
I'll just piggyback on Ryan. Just something into routines. Next month, I'll put something in a written form for professional enrollment and for enrollment. We're all on pins and needles for enrollment, I think, and things look good at Tilford. We've got quite a few kids. Getting their schedule figured out, and you know, we've got a couple kindergarteners that found out they're not there to play all day. That's why they're going to be from growing. Other than that, things are going well.
Just a few things here to remind you. High school has their 9th or 10th through 12th academic awards this Wednesday night, 7 o'clock in the auditorium. Also homecoming, I think I mentioned this in August, but homecoming two weeks away, week of the 23rd, 23rd through 27th, coming up as well too. Overall, school year's off to a great start. I tweeted this out the other day, but very, very few problems. Student body's been great as well too. I was telling a few people the other day, just to see if there's a different buzz at the high school this year, in a positive way. It's amazing, you know, I don't know if it was the John on the road kickoff we had, pre-workshop, but it's something really, just a lot of good, positively positive one off the high school, so that's a good start. An unfortunate note at this point in time, fall play. Jim Stru has really been working hard since last year to find a fall play replacement. He's pretty much exhausted all of his efforts at this point in time in contacts. He had one person on the hook earlier, and that person dropped back out again, and he has called a few other people as well too. So at this point in time, I don't see a fall play taking place. He has made through contact with some people, and to be have some people interested in probably for the following year, but just nobody for this year. There is a spring play that takes place for sure. Somebody's already in line for that, but we just can't find anybody for the fall stuff, so I'm just giving you guys an FYI.
On my end, school year, I have to agree with everyone, school year's off to a good start. Our incoming class, good kids, so thank you, Shelley. Really appreciate that.
Try to keep them.
Yes, I know. That's a good group. I will tell you, the funniest thing is they all have this look of fear in their eyes as they go through the halls, and here we are 12 days in, and so it's, some of that's reassuring. You go, oh, yes, you're okay, you know, it's okay. But they're doing fine. That freshman class coming in is doing great. Everyone else is kind of following too, and I think the routine piece of what they're doing now, just, again, some growing pains. Oh, I really enjoyed the summer, but really enjoying part of the routine. School's starting off to a good year with what we got going on athletically. You know, seeing the other night, I saw many of the staff at the volleyball game and the Courage for Carly event, and I don't think, I can remember, and this is the start of my career, to be honest with you, that I've seen that gym that full when it wasn't a home basketball game. It was volleyball, and that place was packed, packed inside and outside, so that's a great, great piece of advertisement for our district, for our school, for the people in it that show a great deal of care and concern for every member of that community, whether it be a parent, whether it be a teacher, and all that stuff, so. Not to be outdone, but our homework after school, things started tonight as well, but we offer that anytime of the year, so anyway. But we started that tonight, and we'll continue on to that, myself, Mr. Mulcahy, Ms. Hamilton, other people that are available that will be working with kids to get that support that they need, so off into a good year.
All right, thank you very much. All right, and with that, let's go ahead and move on to the superintendent's report.
And with what the administrators are reporting, the start of the year has been a smooth one. Transportation's going well, food service is going well, but most importantly, our kids are getting into routines in the buildings. If you're in the buildings, schools, why not? And people are really focused on what they need to do. I've got a few open enrollment applications that were listed in the packet. I do have a couple that I'm going to ask you to take action on under the consent agenda, but I'll get to those at that time. The auditors were here, and I wanted to point out, if you looked at, the one thing that the auditors really found that we just moved some money in the wrong place, and so certainly know all the money is accounted for, but we took the money out of our management fund in fiscal year 19 for one amount that should have been done in fiscal year 20. So it was approved in July, everything was fine, but then we coded it internally. We coded it to fiscal year 19 instead of 20. So there was a bit of, the auditors noted that, and that was probably the worst thing, or that was the worst thing that came up from the auditors report. It was expense back, okay. Brenda, can I explain that better? Also wanted to give you some numbers from the summer food program, which was a tremendous success. And just to give you an idea, Tilford served about 2,500 breakfasts and almost 6,000 lunches over the summer, and Shellsburg served about 1,100 breakfasts and almost 2,500 lunches. So overall, we had about 3,600 breakfasts, about 8,200 lunches, for just under 14,000 meals that were served in those summer programs. Plus, there was also meals that does not include any of the adults that ate. Want to give you a reminder that the school board election is going to be coming up in November. Normally, this would be our organizational meeting and the other meetings, but the papers are due by 5:00 PM, a week from Thursday, and Brenda will be staying and keeping the office open until anybody might show up. We do have four positions that are open, and so they include a director two position, which is the former Shellsburg area, a director one district currently held by Jaycee Peacock, and another one that's Brenda Bartstevold, in the former Vinton district, and then one at-large position that Kathy will hold, so just how that works. Working on the buildings and grounds position, I would say at this point, we probably have 10 applicants, and we are getting people in with some very solid background in maintenance and HVAC, electrical. Not everybody might have everything, but some very good applicants. I'm wondering if anyone might be interested in assisting with that. I'm going to pitch towards the October 7th of the 80s at this point. Would anybody, Sue had indicated that she might be interested.
Unless more people want to. I can do it for you. It's not my area of expertise.
I may add a little bit of facilities experience.
I'd like that to be part of this time. Okay, that's great. We'll see how things go and with the schedule that, I know sometimes we'll dictate things. Transportation was included under correspondence, and we can talk about it when we do the correspondence. School board convention is November 20 and 21. We do have some rooms reserved, of course, that might change because of the election. And then normally, we would set our agenda for the year, and so what I'm wondering, if we should plan to meet the second Monday of October, which would be the 14th, and then the second Monday of November, which would be the 11th. Does that sound okay? And then I also want to remind that the couple vote is open tomorrow, and a few other things that are there.
It would be October 14th.
It would be October 14th.
Mayor Joe, does it matter if Detron's Day that day?
It's Detron's Day, which means our president, Loveless, is probably having his day off.
So then no issue to get here.
It's my anniversary.
And what would you suggest? If we do it the 18th, that's really going to push some things with the school board convention that we. If we do it the 4th.
I think we have.
I think we have.
We have, yeah.
If we do it on the 4th, then it's before the election, and I don't think, then we need to have a second one almost that month. Let's try the 11th. Let's try the 11th. Sorry, Kathy.
You can call in from dinner with Ryan. We're offering Wendy to be part of our public.
And I would anticipate we'll have those started Saturday, unless there's a request to do it at a certain time.
Okay, so any questions or anything you want to ask from Mayor Joe? If not, let's go ahead and dive into board reports or board requests. Anybody have anything that they would like to share with the group?
I would just add a few more comments about the audit. One of them was that for the first time in many years, the enrollment was okay, which is not a big deal, except that every year it's like we're off point, something or other, just some silly thing because of all of the way that's figured, so I just thought it was kind of interesting.
Not quite as easy as just counting heads, isn't it?
Yes, yes, right. He mentioned the nutrition fund was turning around, which is a good sign. For, he specifically said, and to the board, fundraiser funds, if they're going to be used in the general school fund, should be coded to general fund. Does that make sense? Am I saying that correctly? Whatever. And then, of course, as usual, tighter controls on the activity funds. That's always an issue when we have fundraisers, and they're not always.
So what would be an example of a fundraiser that goes into the general fund? Because I always think of them as activity funds. What would they want going to?
Perhaps being uniforms.
Oh.
Perhaps.
Perhaps.
Some of those things. Generally, they are activities. Perhaps an elementary fundraiser, if it's going to support classroom supplies or classroom purchases. So when the volleyball team does a fundraiser, that's fine to go into activity account, some of those other ones. And really, he, I, my impression with some of those, they do as a standard note on every audit they do. Just like the activity fund itself, they had no concerns with what they found. But they like to make sure that everybody's aware that we continue to do things properly.
Where do you go with the sources?
And overall, he was very complimentary as always. Thank you Brenda for all your hard work. I mean, he just said, and when he met with Mike and myself privately, he reiterated again, he said, this is such a positive audit, so.
Where did the money, not like that for the money they raised for the volleyball, where did that, where does that go?
So the money that we took for Courage for Carly, that will go through our books and then we will cut a check that will stay, I want to say, you will answer that when I do. That will go into an activity account or.
Going to the volleyball, to the account we need to check.
And again, we try to have everything go through the school books, because that's just the best practice.
Yeah, we have to list each check, each person.
I just had one comment here I was going to share, and I think it's tied to something, Mayor Joe, that you have under consent items, this Educational Products, Inc. Is that who people can order their school supplies through online? So I didn't even know this existed. And one of the ladies I work with was talking about it last week, about how awesome it was. So those of you that do, do the shopping for your kids, I mean, she was just raving about how simple it was to just go, I have a third grader and I have a first grader and click and click and on the day they arrive, the stuff is there for them. And they don't have to go out and shop for it, and she said the prices were very reasonable. So the people that are using us, at least when I talk to, love it.
And that's something that we do K through five. It's not something that we've expanded into the secondary level. But yes, we tried it as an experiment. This is our third year and the numbers have increased every year. And then we do make a small profit and roll that back into buying some of those classroom supplies like scissors. That seems to be one of the, and headphones.
Why wouldn't you just run it all the way through though, why, why stop there?
We just suddenly expanded it, if we could. The secondary school supplies are a little different, it's like short for some notebooks.
I mean, I think at least on the eighth grade, maybe not on the high school, but.
Maybe put that on each.
Pencils, pens, notebooks and binder, that's about all you need.
If you want to talk to Molly, we can certainly do that.
And do we do it at both elementary schools?
The things are there on back to school night, so when the kids get there on back to school night, everything's there for them.
Yeah, so she just said, you know, she just put a kid, wants to invent, not have to go to the store and shop. And she said, by the time I ran around to try and buy it all, I would have spent more on time and gas. It, you know, it's a click click gun. Anybody have anything else?
Well, one of the things I was going to mention, today I went to a meeting down at the Kirkwood Benton County Center and it was Empower Rural Iowa meeting. And it's a statewide group that the governor has set up to help small towns, basically. And this one that I was asked to attend dealt with various kinds of grants and revolving loan funds and things like that that will help cities and counties with dilapidated buildings or with developing land. They toured Vinton, then they toured the Braille School and thinking about the mixed use opportunities of the Braille School. And the only reason I mentioned it at school board is that two of the panelists, there were four panelists, and two of those panelists made a special point to say that grants in their application process are considered to be much stronger if the grant applicants partner with the school district and if it's a city that can apply, partner with the county and with the school district. If it's a county thing, you know, do the opposite. And I thought it was interesting that they were encouraging people, because what they said was that ultimately, when they do these kinds of rural development projects, it's the taxpayers who benefit. And, you know, the larger part of the taxes that they pay are going to the school district, so why wouldn't you include the school in your plan? And I thought, ah, so nice to hear that from the state level, so I just thought I'd pass it along.
It does, you need that.
Yes, this room is really good.
Probably appropriate to comment on that.
Yes, it's very good.
When do they finish that?
So very soon. They needed, they ran out of some things, because we changed something, so we need to have a little bit more orders back there. They wanted to get a different lot for the color for the hallway and then come back and do everything. So we're very close. Yes, it's, it's been, there's a lot of doors right there in the corner, but it's working out really nice. Our homeschool assistance program used it this afternoon and I think they were in their little world and there's no disruption of their learning and of our work here, so.
All right, well then on to general business of the board, and we'll start with our consent items.
Okay, and I'm going to go through these kind of in detail. So the minutes, you'll find the minutes from the August 12th regular board meeting. You'll find the claims, and there are a few more this evening that were handed out. The financials and fund transfers, so there's those regular reports. And now, the board did act to place some of the funds that we have in our savings account with Cedar Valley Bank. And so starting from this month forward, that will actually be a separate tag on our PEPAL account, because those are PEPAL funds. So Brenda plans to make that transfer after tonight's board meeting and then that will show up in those reports in the future. The bids, so the west side of the Shelsburg building has a variety of issues and I've shared those before. Well, there is an opportunity right now, the house on the corner burned down, so there is going to be some cleanup. And so now makes, seems to make the time that we could really take out the cement that's there, work on some of the drainage, put some rock and some other block back to really address that. And so there's a bid for matching for $29,870 to address those issues. And the city of Shelsburg, coincidentally Kathy, will partner with us, then will some of that range. So they have some work that they want to do also.
That has been bad for.
Four years?
Yeah, as long as I can remember.
Well, it's not getting any better.
Yeah, it's really bad.
And it's really an issue if we would need to have people leave the west side of the building, like from the gym. The first step was about 18 inches. I also want to mention that Mr. Davis is working with, there seems to be interest in potentially locating a daycare there on that lot where the house just burned. And so the work that we would do would potentially be coordinated with that, so that's pretty exciting. Then under contracts, a contract with Verizon Wireless, this is a short-term solution so that we can have internet access for our students at West Campus. Somehow, the fiber there isn't working, quit working last like a couple days before the end of the school year. And then we tried to do some things over the summer, but seriously, it could be anywhere between here at the middle school and over there. And the cost to do check every inch is almost cost prohibitive. So this will be a short-term solution and then we want to work with the city to provide fiber going forward, once that's available.
Don't we have Shelsburg fiber?
We do, I wish Brenda was here, but then the link to the West Campus was a little bit different. And it broke somehow, so we'd have to actually physically replace it. It is an issue, yes. Then I contract with Recover Health of Iowa to do some skilled nursing services with the educational products that we were just talking about, with the school supplies. And then I've got two open enrollment requests. And so two of those, one is on behalf of Ann, Anna Sasek. And I would ask that you allow me to work with the parents and get some clarification and then return what to do. They actually live in the Lindmar District, so I'm not sure why the request came to us and I got to have a return in that communication. And then the second one is on behalf of Damon Peyton. And I'm asking that you go ahead and approve that one, even though it's late. And that's working with Mr. Ace Lawson, Mr. Kingsbury, they would recommend that we approve that one. Then under contract amendments and modification, if you don't mind, I'm going to read fairly quickly. But Chris Ferguson would have an adjustment in her hourly wage because she has an A.A. degree. Kelsey Fish has got some educational attainments, so her contract amount would increase. Pauline Elwick would continue as our media center teacher, but we are increasing her days from 18 to 22. Jennifer Michael would go from a three-hour position to a 2.25 hour position in the food service. And Misty Williams would go from a 2.25 hour position to a three-hour position. Kelly Weber would become a part of the innovation team. Eric Upmeyer would also be placed on the innovation team. Marie Helmert would be part of the building leadership team. And Danielle Piven would be part on the data team. These are all parts of our teacher leadership program. Becky Luchin would become the halftime Shelsburg guidance counselor and then continuing the shared HR director that we have with Benton. Elizabeth Nelson would become the head secretary at Tilford. Marie Helmert also would get a salary adjustment because of some education attainment. And then two mentors, one would be for Anthony Church to be a mentor and the other would be for Jamie Cole, Dee Tobin and Michelle Weidmeyer to serve as mentors at Shelsburg. And then Charla Raggi and Lisa Murray to serve as mentors as well. And then I'm recommending that you approve an increase of 25 cents per hour for substitute people who serve as either custodians, maintenance or office staff. And this, we had done some other adjustments, but have not did those at this point. And then also, we had someone who did some carpentry work this summer for us. And so instead of the normal 11.50 per hour, we're recommending that he receive $12 per hour, which definitely benefited us to keep some projects moving forward. Under resignations, recommending that Kaylee DeRothenhouse, her resignation be accepted. And then hiring would include Toll Trinkle as a Tilford preschool associate, Terry Snapp to drive a van and shuttle driver, including a big bus, Tammy Griffin as an assistant seventh grade volleyball coach, Wes Recker as an assistant seventh grade football coach, Rich Heisman as assistant middle school cross-country coach, Nancy Donahue, assistant eighth grade volleyball coach, Caitlin Goodell as assistant girls' swim coach, and Crystal Henderson as assistant ball football cheerleading coach. Most of those coaches had to do with solid numbers in those programs. They're wanting to make sure we have two adults with the kids. Recommending that Phil Thomas be transferred from being a van driver to being a bus driver because he's got net authorization. And then asking that you approve substitute teachers of Christie Kreese and Deb Covington, both to be as subs. And then substitute bus drivers, including Jody Beervauer, Les Beervauer, Michael Claire, Rodney Fisher, Dave Gates, Wes Recker, Leon Swanker, Terry Snapp, Phil Thomas and Craig Walker. And then they receive, how much they receive per hour is included there. And it's 22, 25, 20 for bus routes and 11.50 events for activity routes. Out of district travel, requesting that the FFA students be allowed to do their program of study. What's not listed in there is they are requesting that lock-in, that they can do that as well. And then I'm asking permission to attend an A.A.S.A. meeting in Florida in October and then another one that would be part of that governing board that I'm on at the national level in February. The school meal program, Karen Ackman has prepared the district's application. It's very similar to what we've done in the past. And then equipment disposal includes some high school books from the Spanish program. And then the fundraisers, as we're trying to get tighter on some of those things, the post-prom committee included their list of fundraising and schedule for the year under this consent item as well.
All right, if anybody has any questions?
I'm out of breath.
And then all three at once, that was fantastic. Are there any questions? Do we have any promotions?
I will be accepting consent items as presented, second.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion?
I will abstain from the vote.
All right. If nothing further, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And extensions?
Yes.
So motion passes, the consent items are approved as presented.
And I would just note, as a matter of interest, Phil Thomas left his dad this week. So he's, he's been out. The burial was over to the table, so he's been in and out.
All right, so at this time, the financial books and the secretary and treasurer's statements.
So these really were included within the consent agenda item in that part of the packet. There's not a lot that you need to do specifically, but I do know that you look through really those fund balances and you'll see really where we ended up. Now that's cash, so just because there's, there's some money there in the general fund doesn't mean that we always have the authority, as we do, and we're kind of in balance. But it shows you pretty much how all those funds have finished the year. And with the exception of the management fund, they're all in better shape than the year, or the year before. And the management fund will reflect its health in the next month or two as property taxes come in. So we'll be good there as well. The other one that's showed a negative balance was the priest, the four-year, or the daycare pro, uh, three-year-old preschool program at Shelsburg. And Mr. Davis has been working on getting some donations and things to go with that.
Any questions regarding the financial books and statements from the 2018-19 school year? If not, is there a motion to accept those statements and books?
It will be accepted by the H.I. books and the H.I. statements from the 2018 school year.
Got a motion, a second, any further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. All right, we have to now appoint our legislative delegate. Any volunteers?
I'm happy to do that unless somebody else wants to take the term on the audit agenda. I'm happy to do that.
It sounds like we have, so I have a motion actually from Sue.
I'm just going to do a procedural thing suggested instead of.
I'm going to, yeah. I move Kathy Bensing not serve as our district's representative to a delegate assembly, second.
All right, motion a second, any further discussion? And if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And congratulations, thank you Kathy. Not going to vote for yourself, come on. All right, so at this time, we have the second and final review of the new evaluation process for coaches and sponsors. And it looks like it's largely similar to what we have with a little bit of change for adding some things about that.
And that was just a suggestion, you know, it was different eyes going through it. Just being very explicit in what our expectations are. And so Mr. Kingsbury added that, and I think that was really the main.
There's only one of those, I'm going to be ready.
I would just like to, both from the perspective of board members and as a coach. Matt, I appreciate the work you and Jim, and I think Mindy was very involved in that as well, if I was correct.
To the committee.
Yeah, and the rest of the committee, we appreciate that, it's a very, I think, a very good document.
We're looking forward to seeing what the fall season concludes and how that process works, so.
Well, I love the rubric because it gives you lots of good ideas to sit, if a coach sits and reads that rubric, it's like, okay, do this, I should be doing this, I should be doing this. And I think just having that dialogue and that advanced discussion is going to lead to some better coaching and better practice. All right, so at this time, do we have a motion to approve the evaluation? All right, so at this time, do we have a motion to approve the evaluation process for the coaches?
I move to approve the evaluation process for coaches.
Sorry, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion carries. And now, allowable growth.
Okay, this is one of those quirky things that we review once a year. And as predicted, we did have a negative, end up with a negative special education balance. It was significantly down from the previous year. A year ago, it was just under seven-hundred thousand, and this year, it was four-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. If you'd asked what we did differently, there's no specific thing. Special education, we pretty much spend what we need to based on what the student's IEP is. So, if we tried to do a ten percent across-the-board cut, we couldn't because we really have to do what's necessary by those students' IEPs. We also pay the full cost for any student who has an IEP who's open and rolled out. And so, some of those are a bit hard to monitor. But the good news is, the very good news, is that yes, it was down significantly from the previous year. Now, with that, we can go then to the state and ask to have permission to spend that money. That's how we protect our allowable growth, our unspent authority. And so, very much recommending that you go ahead and approve this. This does not mean that we're going to levy back for those dollars. It just means that we're gonna have permission to spend money, and that's a very important component in school funding.
Mary Jo, why is it hard to monitor that? Because aren't all schools bound by the same?
Mm-hmm. That's why seventy-five percent of all schools in Iowa have a negative balance.
But you said it's hard to monitor.
It's hard to control. Maybe not monitor. Brendan monitors it, but it's hard to control because if we, we've had some new students that have moved into us that in their educational plan says that they will have a one-on-one adult with them at all times. We can't say, oh, never mind, we're not going to. So, we're required by law to provide that, and maybe you know the cost that goes with that person.
And as well as if someone open and rolls out.
Yes.
Whatever they work out as their new.
Plan.
Plan with the district and the family, we have to pay for it.
Now, it's our question, I'm guessing. Mm-hmm, yes, yes. Yes, exactly. Boston.
Who sets that? Who sets that, where is that?
That would be the federal law, federal and state law, mostly federal law. So, when P.L. nine-four-one-four-two was passed in nineteen-seventy-five, the federal government said that they would take on forty percent of those costs, and they're probably closer to fifteen percent. So, that's really where that deficit comes from, that lack of support.
And so, the state where they fund us at would say that they're funding what they've committed to. It's the federal government that is not meeting its obligations. All right, so at that time, at this time, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion regarding the modified allowable growth for the negative special education balance?
Would you request allowable growth and supplemental state aid for the negative special education balance for the 2018-19 year, around four-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, three-hundred-and-oney dollars?
All right, so we have a motion, Jason, and a second from Sue. Any final questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion is carried. And at this time, now we have an opportunity to discuss our 2019 and 2020 goals.
So, again, this would be something we would traditionally do in September, is board goals. I'm not sure what makes the most sense now that we are looking at having the election in November. But I do think it makes sense that the administrative team has talked about these and what data we can provide around each of these goals. And to me, it makes sense to set them more in September than in November, December. So, you will note, they are similar to what last year's looked like. And we, as administrative teams, still think that these should be our priorities and want to move forward on them.
Anybody have any thoughts or questions on our goals? They've been fairly similar now for the better part of a decade. We've added over time the number five there, the district, and our work within our community, understanding that strong schools make for strong community and vice versa.
And that would fit in with what Kathy Zune said today.
Absolutely. Any questions, any comments, suggestions, changes, additions? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the 2019-20 goals as presented.
Second. And a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And, Mary Jo, one thing just administratively, I would say maybe we ought to look at this and say, you know what? We've always done it in September, which is after the school year started because the board always changed in September. But if we're not gonna do it, why don't we move it earlier next year? Maybe do it in July to give the administrators all summer. If, for instance, the goals are changing, that way they've got an opportunity to adjust what they're planning before the students show up. Since now that the election is in November, I guess. All right, now, we have something here regarding the High School Athletic Association and the Girls' Athletic Union reclassification issue.
So, this is an item that came up originally from the urban schools, asking that the athletic associations would look at how they make classifications. So, you're all aware that, in general, we're a three-A district, and that three-A is based on the fact how many students we have in our high school. And so, they look at that kind of as an average number, and that's, they look everybody in the state. They rank order and then say, okay, here's the biggest district, here's the next biggest, and they go there. There is a recognition that not all, enrollment should, may not be the best, we've been only reflection of how those should be classified. And so, there is a recognition that, for instance, schools that have higher poverty levels quite oftentimes have fewer students out. We had a discussion at our superintendent's meeting about this last week. And this interim superintendent from Cedar Rapids said that this plays out within her own district. And the previous week, when they had a football game, they had one high school within the Cedar Rapids area that had, for instance, seventy-two kids on the sideline. And the other school had, for instance, seventeen. And so, there is this big gap in how many kids are going out. And so, poverty plays a part. Partly, then, it's harder to do some of those club volleyball, club clubs, and some of those participation. English language learners can also impact participation in some of those activities. And so, when you look at really who's doing well across the state, you can almost do a prediction that the schools who are winning the state championships have very, very low free and reduced lunch numbers. And so, is it really that they have that better program, or do they have some other advantages? And so, many schools are looking, the boards are looking at this and just asking the association and the union to consider, is there anything that we could be doing differently? And many states across the nation are using more than just enrollment. And so, there's some other models out there that they could look at. And so, this resolution is requesting that this be looked at.
I think it sounds great.
So, are they thinking of something like a lady or?
Yes.
Yes, makes sense. I listened to a radio I-Pod thing a couple of weeks ago, and they talked about how, just in the time that our kids, which would be like the late nineties, graduated from Benton-Shelsburg to now, that the growth of private club competition across the nation is now a five-point-six-billion-dollar business. And that what it has done, and this was the head of the Athletic Association for Iowa speaking, and then also a referee that had refereed like thirty different sports for thirty years. And he said, what it's done is eliminate opportunity for kids who haven't started from fifth grade on learning, you know, the fundamentals of basketball.
Or minor.
Yeah, well, I was being generous by saying fifth grade, but yes. And so, a couple of the solutions that they were suggesting was that they might have more than one varsity team for multiple sports, and that it wouldn't be done with talent, that they would, they'd all have divided up the talent and they just would have more than one set of varsity opportunities for kids. Another suggestion was that we, no matter what the size of the school is, that we encourage kids to do multiple sports. And in that way, encourage more kids to go into some of the sports that are less showy, and do some of the other life sports. We do that here, but they were talking about some of the big schools where everybody's a one-sport wonder, and they don't, they don't have an opportunity to get into anything else. So, I think this might be in a good direction.
When do they wanna, when would they start working through that, then?
This is just a request to them that they start that on the table. You know, right now, the associations aren't really acknowledging that there's a potential issue there. So, it's not saying, here's a solution. It's asking those two organizations, would you please look at it? Sometimes during this year, start looking at it. That doesn't mean they would even have it done in one year. That very much could be something that they need to spend some time.
And we don't know what the end product looks like necessarily, but it's just. Well, wouldn't it be reclassified?
Doesn't have to do, doesn't have anything to do with our athletic conference. Doesn't have to do with conferences. It has to do really with postseason play.
I mean, basically, right now, what they do is they take a look at your enrollment for your ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade because the seniors are going to be leaving. And then, they just look and see kind of, and they rank order schools by just number of kids. This is just simply saying there's a lot more that should be considered than just the number of ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders you have. And I mean, I even see it, as I coach, working with kids that, you know, nobody's paying for their car or their insurance, nobody's paying for their cellphone. If they want those things, they have to do it themselves and they have to work. And so, constantly juggling kids that aren't able to be here at practice and, you know, because they have a work commitment, or they have to leave the team because they have a work commitment. And then, I talk to coaches in other districts, larger districts, more affluent districts, they don't have that issue. And if they do have kids, they can just say, look, if you're not here, you're not here, you know? You gotta be here if you want to be on the team, you know? And they still have, you know, fewer kids that are in that situation. They have parents that pay for their car insurance and parents that provide a cellphone.
It's another way of putting up the hands and head lots.
Yeah, it impacts our ability to draw numbers, you know, or any district. I mean, there's districts with far worse free and reduced numbers, far, far higher numbers than ours. And, you know, if you have eight hundred kids to draw from, but four hundred of them have to work, and they have no choice, then you really only have four hundred to draw from.
That's how it was.
I could see activities like band inquiry, something like that as well. Yeah, I know it's not sport, but definitely would be a benefit.
The music association and the speech association follow whatever the athletic and association and union, that the four of them work together.
Well, and in this radio pod thing, they said, podcast, they said that with enough advance notice, board, school boards would have to really plan on how to handle this because it would mean that you'd be hiring a lot more coaches and you'd have to get equipment. You know, there are things that would change that would be something you want to pre-plan. So, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be best to jump into it, you know, too fast.
So, I'm not gonna read through the entire resolution. It's in your board packets, passed around the table, folks, the glance. And it is rather lengthy, but, so, any further discussion on that? And this will lead to be a roll call vote. Any motion against? Anyone want to make a motion?
I introduce the resolution concerning school classification and faculty enrollment action.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any last, if there's a discussion or questions? If not, Brenda, would you please do a roll call vote?
Kelly?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Gates?
Is telling the roll call.
Yeah, yes, our, yes, sorry.
Okay, so the, that has passed. All right, and next, we have recognition of September as our attendance awareness month.
This is a similar, similar work that you've done each of the last probably three years, as you do the fourth year. Really, a recognition that September is important for setting those good habits of attendance. Coincidentally, I was in one of the buildings, and I believe there were four-hundred-and-ninety kids who had perfect attendance out of four-hundred-and-ninety-eight so far this year, as of today. So, I mean, it makes a difference, and the adults recognizing and encouraging it helps our kids be.
Anybody have any questions? And we can actually put it up on the screen if you want. It's appendix, or it's exhibit ten.
It'll be page one-fourteen, Tony. It's actually gonna also be a resolution, so somebody could, could.
We have it as a resolution. Oh, it's a proclamation.
Yeah, a proclamation, okay. Something just could be a proclamation.
I want to go into a proclamation. Okay, so at this time, is there a motion on the floor?
I move to recognize September as a attendance awareness month for the middle school.
Second.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear. There's a second.
No, nobody did ask me to read it.
Got a motion and a second. I would just like to say, I'd like to recognize all the folks that are involved every day. I know we spend a lot of time at the elementary level focused on getting those kids in, and I know we do as well in all of our buildings. And so, for everyone that's involved day-to-day with making sure kids are there and able to learn and prepared to learn, we appreciate the work that you do. All right, any further comments or questions? Nope, not yet. So, if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And motion is approved. And that takes us to correspondence items and reports. And the meeting's only been going on for an hour and eleven minutes. And Mary Jo, take your sweet time going through these, because I wouldn't want anybody to not know what to do with the rest of the evening.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the transportation report. Our overall costs did increase by about thirteen thousand dollars, but we also had some significant savings in our total cost of fuel, so that was a highlight. Really, the other thing that made it so that we did have more expenses overall were the vehicle depreciation expenses went up more than they had a year ago. So, sometimes, you know, some of that is beyond our control. But I also wanted to note that, basically, when we look at how many students ride our buses on a daily basis, last year, we had about five-hundred-and-sixty-five, or seventeen, or other, and then last year, it was a little bit down to five-hundred-and-thirty-six. And our average cost to transport one of those students was eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. So, we are still one of the lower ones in the state. Our cost per mile is three dollars and seven cents. The year before, it had been three dollars and five cents. So, we still are not considered one of the high expense for transportation. But it's about, just in your mind, every time you see a bus go down the road, the cost is about three dollars a mile.
Which is pretty interesting because we are a fairly large, geographically a large district.
We get some economy of scale. To be quite honest, we've got some great drivers.
Yeah, I think that's the thing, coming on, is they're just kind of around town, sunlight. And a lot of buses, they just see all day long. I mean, it just seems like there's somebody going somewhere and taking somebody over. They're all replaced all the time. Somebody drove away with the mouse, but one of the bus. So, we took that the other day.
And then, other things on correspondence and reports, the FFA, they're letters in there. The school meal application's in there, the academic awards letter. And then, as a handout tonight, you had an invitation from some students who plan to do a maintenance climate issue.
That must not have been here in January, this last year.
That's here. Full confinement strike.
Yeah, can you share that?
So is that acceptable for how?
They will be marked as absent.
On a speed.
Not exempt.
On a speed.
Which is what we've done in other times.
But they're not going to promote them?
That's a great area.
That's a free, freedom of speech. Just like I would share anything that people say, hey, share this with the board.
So they're going to come to school, and they're going to walk out, is that how it works?
For one class period.
Leave the property and then come back in?
Well, they're not going to leave the property. They are pointing on inviting people from the community, the mayor, potentially you guys, to meet on the grassy field for the cross-country rendezvous right now for twenty to thirty minutes. Are they at least going to move out on a break so that they're not getting up in the middle of classes? They're going to, the plan is, and again, I, right, right now, the number of students is below ten.
Okay.
But that could grow, you know, unless some students want to promote it. But the plan is to begin period greet, get their attendance taken, and then peacefully just walk up and then head out to the ground out here. You know, it's great to live in a free society where you can express your beliefs, and it's also understood that sometimes free speech does come with consequences, so if they're supposed to be in school and they're not in school, they should be.
No, they, they all understood that, and the two I, not with the day I understood that completely.
They've been very respectful.
Doesn't that mean disruption of the class?
They're not just, they're not doing anything that disrupts the learning.
Less disruptive, yeah. I mean, Mr. Kingsbury will keep an attentive eye whether or not it disrupts.
I don't, I don't, this will not be disruptive, maybe.
I'm impressed that they're talking to you about it, that they're not just suddenly getting up, walking out the door.
I had a good thought, it is okay about one or two, so they're proactive, and, oh, I'm respectful about it, so. I know there's other schools around here doing the same thing.
Just seems like they're, I mean, just, for me, it just seems, you know, if they walk, you know, not going into cla, it just seems like that would be disruptive once classes started, I think there's got to be maybe, you know, they did it in between classes, they drifted out, I think that'd be.
Well, there's going to be extraneous during that time. You can't just sit there and say, there's something, walk up, and walk out, and extraneous consequences.
Yeah, but all you could do is ask them to do it on break instead. So it's to not disrupt learning of people who would like to be.
There was a lot being discussed, but it was also a fun time to be.
Okay, yeah.
So if that's okay, that's all that I need to talk about tonight.
All right. Anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Calling once, going twice, all right. Meeting is adjourned, thank you all.